Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 1st, 2024 City Council Meeting. Suzanne, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor LaBarre is absent. Mayor Protim Kees.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Zulawaga.
Present.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Tonight, we are honored to have a flag ceremony and pledge of allegiance led by the Cub PAC 20 and Boy Scout Troop 230. And then after they present the colors, I'll ask you all to please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Please prepare to cross the colors. Please post a flag of the United States of America. Please post the flag of Colorado. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's introduce to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, return to post. About face. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Audience, at ease. Color guard dismissed.
So, in honor of Mayor LaBarre, I would ask the scouts and whomever's with them this evening if they'd like to come up to the front of the room, and I'd like to share one of the mayor's pins with you, please. And we want to get some, a picture.
One with Mayor Protim.
Okay, now we're in business. But I remember all their names now. Darren Vandeheer, Rex Collinsworth, Brody Lambert, Connor Lambert, Colton, no Colt, Bodine, Colton Lacy. Those are my Boy Scouts, and now I'm going to have Scott introduce his Cub Scouts.
These are some scouts from PAC 20. Mason, Jax, Dagney, and Finn.
Mayor Protim, would you get a picture? You want a picture, thank you? If I, if I may, may I, may I ask Councilmember Connors to take a picture with them? He's the one that organized all of this, so, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Our future leaders. All right, we're on to item three, and that is item A, celebration of Cindy Keating's 30 years of service to the city of Woodland Park, and that will be Suzanne Leclair, City Clerk Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. I'd like to call Cindy up to the podium, please. I'm going to make you stand there for a few minutes.
Then I'm going to make you listen to me, too.
Okay, so I would like to take council back and the audience back to the year 1994. 1994, after years of apartheid in South Africa, as South Africa saw their first, bear with me, their first black president with Nelson Mandela. Tonya Harding attacked Nancy Kerrigan. Kurt Cobain from Nirvana passed away. The murder case was mounting against O.J. Simpson. Forrest Gump, Shawshank Redemption, and Shinla's List were the movies of the time. Friends, it was the first year of the sitcom Friends. Who here knows the song from Ace of Base, "I Saw The Sign"? Okay, so that was the year this song, "I Saw The Sign," was introduced in 1994. At that time in 1994, the city of Woodland Park also saw the sign, and they hired Cindy Keating. So here we have it. That was the biggest, that was the biggest headline for the city of Woodland Park, Cindy Keating is hired. Cindy started at the city of Woodland Park and held very, lots of very diverse positions here. She held the position of the Public Works Administrative Assistant. She worked in the Finance Department as the Revenue Clerk and Purchasing. We don't even have that position anymore. She worked as the Deputy Court Clerk. Cindy moved to Parks and Rec as the Recreation Specialist, and then Parks and Recreation Coordinator, and then in 2006, Cindy was promoted to the Parks and Rec Director. Cindy has been responsible for spearheading the development of Crestwood Park. I want you to just all listen to these. These are very special parks and places in all of our hearts. Crestwood Park, the Meadowwood Sports Complex tennis courts, the playground, the hockey rink, Panther Field, the synthetic multipurpose turf fields, Red Mountain Adventure Park, Memorial Park Development, the Aquatic Center, two parks, trails, and open space master plans. Cindy has also overseen the renovation of the Ute Pass Cultural Center. As council is aware, Cindy is currently spearheading the Avenger Open Space Acquisition of Property, which will be the largest acquisition of open space in the city's history. During Cindy's tenure here at the city, she moved from everything being on paper to now where citizens can register for Parks and Rec online, they can pay online, all of that under Cindy. Cindy was the president of the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association for two years in 2011 and 2012, and she still remains active in this organization. Through all of Cindy's efforts and works, she has touched the lives of so many children and adults in this community. Each and every one of us here this evening, I bet, can talk about a park or a program that they have participated in, and it's because of Cindy. An event that you've attended at the Cultural Center in Memorial Park, it's because of Cindy. Cindy is well-respected amongst all of her peers and colleagues. Parks and Recreation is known as the fun department and well-loved by her employees who are with us tonight. I can ask right now if Cindy's current employees and former employees wouldn't mind standing. We have people here that I haven't seen in years that have come back to see Cindy. I have Ryan Beatty and Nicole are some of Cindy's former employees. Thank you for standing. She's just well-loved. The city and community are grateful to Cindy for making the city of Woodland Park the beautiful place it is to live and play in for the last 30 years. Please help me in thanking Cindy for the 30 years of service to the city of Woodland Park. Maybe can we get a picture, Aaron and I with you?
So I did have a speech, but I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to follow this, but first of all, thank you so very much. I'm happy to be here this evening. It's not every day that a gal gets to be recognized for 30 years of public service. First of all, what I'd like to do is recognize or introduce my family to you. For those of you that aren't familiar with everything that it takes to do a Park and Rec program, your family becomes your volunteer staff. And so I'd like to introduce my husband, Kip. Kip, thank you for your support on my early mornings, late evenings, and weekends. You're always supportive when I had to work extra hours and outside of the normal. Huge thank you for all of your help setting up and tearing down events because you were right there helping.
We thank you too, Kip.
My daughter, Amanda. Amanda would come to the office after school, and I would put her to work. She would do filing and put packets together and do some inventory and just about anything that I needed. She was my little handy helper. Every once in a while, I come across one of her file folders with her handwriting on it, and it just makes me laugh and smile and remember the good times when she came to the office to help me. My granddaughter Alexis, right here. I haven't quite got her in the office doing work yet, but I got a little bit of time still. She does participate in our recreation programs, which is so fun to have her part of that. She takes our swimming lessons, and right now she's playing first and second grade basketball, right? Yeah. So Kip and I have had some fun the past week and a half or so, knowing this was coming up when we were going down the 30-year memory lane. And so I just wanted to share some of the things that we kind of came up with as, I couldn't come up with all of them because I'd keep you here all night and you guys would fall asleep and, but anyhow, so when I started at the city, the city streets were dirt. Highway 24 had on-street parking and one lane going each direction. If my memory serves me correctly, the big discussion or question at the time was, should we pave the streets or build a rec center? I think you know what we got. We got paved streets. We're still trying to get a rec center. And everything was done manually. As Suzanne had indicated, we had carbon paperwork orders. We had carbon copy credit card receipts. Remember those little ch-ch-ch? And then the carbon copy phone message books, typewriters with the correction tape. Boy, did I need that. And then, of course, the paper registrations and our program rosters. Everything was paper. The rec guide was paper. It was even newspaper material, and we mailed it through the post office three times a year. And oh, the fax machine. Do you guys remember the fax machine when it came around? It was the best thing ever. But when it didn't work, you thought the world was going to end, kind of like today when the internet is down or you don't have access to your files. So that's the span that we've gone through. I worked with many amazing people, from city staff to local businesses and community volunteers. When I first started in Park and Rec, I was, you know, I worked the front desk. I worked with a lot of people. It was really hard to go to the grocery store and actually get out of there within an hour or so because so many people wanted to come and talk to you, which is great because you get to know your participants, you get to know your community. I've hired some amazing people. I'd like to recognize the ones that are here tonight, if you guys don't mind. I have Nicole Evans, Ryan Beatty, Lane Wilberding, Louis Lang, Brady Warner, and Jeffrey Giddens. Thank you for being here tonight. I have many other great employees that I hired so much that other departments stole them from me. So I just want to say, you're welcome to the Finance Department and Utilities. Our community is incredibly supportive of Parks and Recreation, and we couldn't do what we do without their support. And so it's just a blessing to be able to be, to work for such a great place. I truly believe that I worked with, excuse me, the city of Woodland Park for 30 years because of all the opportunities that were provided to me. The career progression, as Suzanne talked about, the support to try something new, like online registration and virtual recreation guides, and then the support for continued education and certifications. And then also, like Suzanne indicated, was supporting my role with the State Association on their executive board. And I was president for two years, but I was on the board for four. So it did take me out of the office quite a bit, but the city supported me in that. It was a great experience. There's also been so many opportunities to learn new things. When I started, I had never produced a recreation guide, never written a grant, never planned a new park, nor did I develop or manage a budget, department budget. I never had identified and managed capital projects, opened and managed aquatic center. And then currently today, I have never purchased land to put a conservation easement on it. So the challenges and the support that you have from the city is what keeps me here. There's so many that it's just never a dull moment, and I really enjoy what I do here and I enjoy the people that I work with. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Woodland Park and the community for the past 30 years. I'm so grateful and I feel very blessed. So thank you all, and I very much appreciate, appreciate every single one of you.
Congratulations, Cindy. On to item 3B is a presentation by Newmont Cripple Creek Mine. Hunter Peralas from the Cripple Creek Mine, she is the External Relations Representative.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Blake. I'm the Sustainability and External Relations Manager at CCNV's, or Newmont CCNV Mine. Tonight with me, I have Caitlin Ragsdale and Hunter Peralas, who will be delivering the presentation. Thanks for having us. I don't know why they give me technology. I break it every time. So we'll see. So like Katie said, I'm Caitlin Ragsdale. I'm the External Relations Supervisor at the Cripple Creek and Victor site. I'm just going to quickly go over. It sounds like you guys have a long night, so I'm going to try and make this brief. I'm going to go over 2023 Community Investment. Our total company contributions was just over $504,000. And then a breakdown follows. Our Community Investment Committee awarded just over $270,000 to various nonprofits throughout the community, scholarships, and the amount of $18,500. Our annual school grant funding was $55,000. So Cripple Creek and Victor School District and the Woodland Park School District each received $20,000, and then the Canyon City School District received 15. Our Legacy Fund, which I'll get into later, but our Legacy Fund Company Match was $80,000. And then our Endowment Fund is an additional $30,000 every year. And then our environmental team contributed $50,000 to the Colorado Trot Unlimited Abandoned Mine Land Reclamation Program. Our 2023 Volunteer Hours, where our employees contributed 151 hours last year, and then our Women and Allies Business Resource Group contributed an additional 46 and a half hours delivering Alaska Resource Education in local school districts. So they came to Woodland Park and Cripple Creek School Districts and delivered that education. So a quick review of our investment requests and our investment strategy, why, why we make the decisions that we make. So when we get an application, we look if the, we look at the intended recipient is either a tax-exempt government agency or educational institute. This is required to receive funding from our Community Investment Committee. So this excludes businesses or for-profits, things like that. Does the request align with our mission, vision, and values, which are available publicly? Does the request comply with our anti-corruption standard? Newmont's a founding member of the Partnering Against Corruption Initiative, which is an effort led by international businesses to fight corruption. And there's the, is the request in line with our Community Investment Strategy, which is also available publicly? And we consider, is there an opportunity for our representation in local communities? Is there a way that we can partner with these organizations to further our impact? Has the request been received on time for a sensible investment to be made? So we do require investment applications to be received at least two weeks in advance of our meetings. We meet four times a year. So we'll meet again in April, April, July, and October. So some reasons for denial. So there was a lack of, either there was a lack of detail provided with the application. The applicants have not demonstrated an ability to help themselves. They're relying solely on a contribution from Newmont. This isn't sustainable, either for the organization or for Newmont, to be the sole funder. Applicants have not acknowledged any past assistance from Newmont, or they failed to demonstrate use of past contributions for the intended purpose, or there's been a lack of progress on past projects. And additionally, we reserve the right to decline applications based on majority vote. We're really looking to connect our investment dollars to the greatest community need. Our investment focus is Cripple Creek and Victor, as we are in their backyards, but we do give additional focus to Woodland Park just based on the number of employees, contractors, and vendors who either reside here in Woodland Park or travel through Woodland Park on their way to and from work. Our development areas, we focus on local economic development, human development, natural resource protection, and then cultural and heritage sustenance. Some strategic changes that we're focusing on this year, we're looking to end event funding by 2026. We're really looking to reflect a values-driven process with a focus on more sustainable projects that are led by partnerships in the community. There are very few organizations that will be impacted by this. Most of the organizations that will be impacted by this will just change how we fund them. So instead of, for example, we partner with Help the Needy here in Woodland Park. So instead of focusing our funding on the Sweetheart Ball, we can still support their programming. It just won't be, we won't get the recognition at the Sweetheart Ball. So we'll still be able to support them. We will just reduce our own recognition in that way. And then we're also looking to require project progress reports at mid-mark and completion of the project. So we're really looking to make sure that those investment dollars are being used as they were intended. And then moving on to our Legacy Fund. So our Legacy Fund is our employee giving program. It was, it was created in Nevada in 2010 and brought to CCNV in 2017. And it allows employees to make charitable contributions to organizations of their choice. And then the donations are matched either directly to that organization or to the Endowment Fund, which will benefit communities in the future. And there's currently three Endowment Funds established for Teller, Fremont, and El Paso County, and that was based on where our employees lived in 2017 when the Legacy Fund was created. So in 2023, 50% of those funds, the employee donations and match stayed in Teller County. 19% went to Fremont County, 11% went to El Paso County, another 11% went into the Endowment Funds. And then there was 9% that went outside of local impact. So those are organizations like American Heart Association, Cancer Society, stuff like that. And then I'm going to turn it over to Hunter, and she'll talk to you about procurement.
Good evening, council. My name is Hunter Peralas, as Katie said. Just going over some local procurement for our 2022 social impact, really focusing on prioritizing local procurement. And so you can go through our supply chain for, at thenewmont.com/about and contact us, which our supply management focuses on locality and Indigenous and women's and minorities for our targeted audience, as well as skill level. So it would be unskilled, semi-skilled, skilled, and professional. And this applies to all sites and all phases of our mine lifecycle, including exploration, design, construction, operation, and closure. And then just some jobs that we had this morning. We have haul truck operator, heavy equipment operator, driller, tech one through six, and then fixed plant maintenance mechanic, all within the same hourly range. And then our upcoming community presentation, so the most upcoming one would be our open house at the Victor Community Center. That would be February 29th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then, of course, our Cripple Creek City Council and then our other open house that would be held in Cripple Creek instead of Victor. And then here's just an update of our S and E R contact information. So Katie Blake, Caitlin Ragsdale, and myself. And then we have a vacant position for External Relations Representative, hopefully being filled soon. We have our External Relations email as well as our Community Investment Committee email as well. I know I talk kind of fast, but are there any questions for us?
Counsel, any questions?
No? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, number four, do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
None this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to number five, the Consent Calendar. You have two items, counsel. Item A is a construction agreement contract, and then the minutes from our last meeting. Anyone have questions for either of these, or can we take them together?
I do. I've asked the attorneys to explain to us the antitrust clauses in the contract with Organic. And I, my curiosity was, why is that such a big deal with our contracts? And so if you could enlighten us about the exposure to the city and not, and how that all works, that'd be great. Just prefacing that, antitrust to me is monopolistic practices, taking advantage in the contracting process.
First, I want to, I want to compliment you on reading this contract so carefully, Councilmember Suzanne. My new type that you found this. Antitrust is mentioned two times in these contracts, and it's, and the reasons are both related to the fact that this is a state highway project and CDOT is involved in federal funds. So there are various requirements associated with that. Antitrust comes up in two places, in CDOT Farm 621. If you're a contractor or subcontractor involved in the project and you believe the 621. If you're a contractor or subcontractor involved in the project and you believe that you have a claim under any state or federal antitrust law, you get to assign the right to CDOT to pursue the claim, which in there are much more capable of doing that. So that's for the benefit of the contractor and us. And secondly, within the contract itself, it states that in order to be a first-tier participant in this in this contract, you cannot have been convicted of antitrust violations within the past three years. Also assuring qualification of the of the bid or of the applicants, the people to do the work.
One of the reasons this came up, and I don't offer it as substantive, but we all noticed that I-24 was sealed this summer. And then we noticed that they were scratching it out. And I got so many questions of people saying, why are they scratching that out, you know? So and then I guess it's it wasn't done correctly, and then they had to have another company come in and mill over it. And somebody said, oh, yeah, the guy who's doing the follow-up contract is cousins or uncle or relation or something to to the contractor. So that's what triggered my my awareness to ask you this question because and so the exposure is not to the city of Woodland Park if if they're found to be doing something glad-handing each other.
No.
Okay, good. That's right.
Easy answer.
It's a lot of work for that.
Thank you. You've satisfied my curiosity. I don't have any other questions on.
Mister, I mean, Frank?
Well, some refer to me as mister. How many? What's the total amount of miles we're doing? Do we know?
Just a second. I can pull that up really quick.
Just trying to see how much how much it costs per mile. See what a million 200 gets you.
It's a lot.
I'll be the judge of that.
Approximately 0.3 miles.
That's all I needed to know.
Anything else, Counsel? Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion, Counsel? Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to item six, public comment items not on the agenda. Suzanne, do we have anyone?
We have no one signed up in the back and no one has signed up on Zoom. Anyone wants to talk tonight?
Anyone in the audience wish to address the council? Yes?
No.
No? Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. That takes us to item seven, unfinished business, and we do not have anything. Item eight, ordinances on initial posting. We still have nothing. And item nine, public hearings. Item A is approval. I was looking for the applicants, and they will be here any moment. Approval of an application from Boards and Barrels LLC, DBA Boards and Barrels Bistro for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license located at 19263 US Highway 24 in Woodland Park. And Suzanne, I am the listing agent on the sale of this property. And so absolutely, I have a conflict of interest. So I will recuse myself from the conversation and from the vote on this item, and I will remain on the dais but will not participate. Thank you. So I'll leave it with you.
Thank you. This is an exciting event that's happening here at the city Boards and Barrels LLC.
Carrie's here. Sorry to interrupt you.
Come on up. Come on up. We're gonna talk a little bit, and then we're gonna have you talk. So Boards and Barrels Bistro is located, and the best way I can explain it to everyone is at the former Swiss Chalet. So the former Swiss Chalet is becoming Boards and Barrels. And the applicants are Carrie Platzer and David Platzer. The LLC has a current sales tax and FEI number. And the applicant submitted a petition, and that petition is for needs and desires. So they go around and they ask people, do you think we're good? Do you want us to be here? Do you want another restaurant? Do you want us to have a liquor license? They had 31 signatures of people in the local community of residents and businesses that agree that they are a good fit for the community. The location is eligible to be licensed. There's one thing I do have to say out loud that's a little bit different for this license. If Council read my staff report, typically, we do not bring a license to Council that has not been purchased and closed on yet. Usually, I bring it to you and I tell you that we have a contract, we have or we have a lease or something like that, a deed. We are asking Council tonight to approve this liquor license as a request of the applicant's SBA loan. In order for them to close on their SBA loan, they need to have the liquor license first. So we are asking for a special exception from the Council this evening. The applicant is under contract to purchase the said property, and the property is scheduled to close between February 9th and February 12th. This application will not be approved by the Department of Revenue until the property is closed. So we will approve it as a local on a local level tonight. It'll be sitting up at the State Department, waiting for their deed and their contract and the closing, and then the state will approve it at that point. So we're just doing the first step so the applicant can move forward with their closing process. The application was submitted to our office on January 12th. The property was posted on January 22nd as required by law, and the public notice was published on the city's website, also required by law. Character of the applicant is not an issue for this hearing, and all applicable fees have been paid. Ms. Platzer is here this evening to answer any questions that Council may have, and I'm also here for any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Platzer?
No.
How about we have Ms. Platzer tell us what she's planning on doing?
Tell us what you're doing. That'd be great.
Carrie, can you put the mic in the microphone, please, for the viewing audience? Thank you.
Absolutely. Is it on? Yeah. Can you hear me? Okay. So my husband and I have been looking for an opportunity for quite a while now. And the right place at the right time is at our fingertips. I formerly worked for the Levy family out at the Pepper Tree in Colorado Springs for close to six years, and I absolutely adore that family. So when this opportunity came up, I I can't even tell you my excitement. What we're looking at doing, it's called Boards and Barrels Bistro. And so it will be more of a frequently visited establishment, we're hoping for all of you. It's not going to be that, I mean, it could still be special occasion, of course, but it's not going to be that weeks pay to get you dinner and drinks. Dave's been in culinary for 37 years. I've been in the food and beverage industry for 41. I've worked in various places. I've worked in clubs. I've worked at the Broadmoor. Like I said, I worked at the Pepper Tree. Right now, at my current job in Colorado Springs, I run the beverage program for six different properties. So knowing what we're doing, yes, hoping to be able to offer a little bit of something different to the great community out here is what we're looking forward to doing. There's gonna be a nice little variety of things on the menu. Dave's very, very into old-world techniques, so making his own sausage, making some great charcuterie, homemade sauces, different things like that. So a lot of shareable plates, not really tapas, because we wouldn't consider ourselves tapas. But we like to consider that when we go out, which is rare, because we both work a lot, and you sit down and you you have to decide what plate you want, and you go, gosh, I really want this. I want this. I want this. So our philosophy is to bring a few more items to the table that are more shareable, per se. So you get a little, you know, little taste of different things all the time. We're definitely looking at, you know, revamping the the upper unit to do that overnight kind of bed and breakfast thing that will probably take us a minute. We're looking at upgrading the the outdoor seating to get those boards uncracked and up to up to speed. Remodeling quite a bit because, you know, we've we've all loved the Swiss Chalet, and it just seems that in the last year, a lot of things changed with that property. And so we're not going to try to go back in and rebuild what the Levy family did such a great job at. But we're gonna rebuild something that we know we can do a great job at. So we're really excited to be here. You know, we started moving in some stuff today, and I'd run home real quick, get freshened up because I didn't want to come in and dust and sweatpants and all that kind of stuff. But we're looking at maybe not to start, but eventually doing a Sunday brunch, which is gonna have, you know, all home-cooked meals. It's not gonna just be your eggs and bacon kind of things like that. My husband is very creative with the food side of things. And I like to think that I'm pretty creative with the beverage side of things, whether they be non-alcoholic or alcoholic. You know, I'll I'll continue to keep a nice wine list. And, you know, the the full name is realistically Boards and Barrels Bistro and Whiskey Whiskey House. So I have a lot of experience in mixology. I'm a quarter master sommelier certified, so my wine knowledge is pretty up there. I don't brag about it, but it's something that I have had an extreme interest in in the last 35 years. So I've done a lot of studying with that. So putting putting plates together with beverages together, again, whether they're soft drinks or alcoholic drinks, that's something that just excites me on a daily basis to to come up with ideas on. So so we're going to again do a little remodeling. We're gonna upgrade the bathrooms to make them a little more compliant for any ADA needs and things like that. Eventually, we'll get a ramp in the front instead of making people have to come through the back door to get into the property and hosting some different events. You know, we'll do some themed dinners. We'll do, you know, some fun things with the community. We're looking at getting very involved with everyone here to be very supportive. You know, we're not against doing any type of charity events because we're both from that era in our lifetimes where charities are very important to us. You know, I donate to as many dog rescues as I can. We donate to anything that I can. We definitely had our share of donating to to food kitchens and things like that in our in our careers. So things like that are very important to us. And so we feel that strength in this community here, which is again, one of the reasons why we were really excited to get this opportunity to be a part of it. I think I've talked enough.
Thank you.
I am a talker. So when you see me in the restaurant, don't be afraid to tell me to shut up because I am the talker in the family.
Counsel, anything else?
When do you target for opening?
Kind of depends on the remodel. We're looking at end of March, early April. Hopefully by then, just depends on if there's any, you know, downfalls for construction and whatnot. So the biggest construction is gonna be remodeling the restroom areas. And then I'm going to flip the bar around so I can have a few seats at the bar. So if you're waiting for a table, or if you just want to come in and chat with me for a while and have a quick beer, we'll have that opportunity for you.
No more questions. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I will open the public comment portion of the public hearing if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to address the council.
There is nobody online.
Thank you, Suzanne. Seeing no one, I will close that portion of the public hearing and look to Council for further deliberation or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for Boards and Barrels LLC as presented.
I'll second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Yes, thank you. Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
All the best, Carrie.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I just the audience just for a second?
Please.
Some of you may have seen me clicking on this. I received a text from a citizen that our link on Zoom was broken. That's all I've been doing right here. I am not communicating on any votes or the record. We're not supposed to respond to texts. So that's what it is. I'm just letting them know we had a break in the link.
Thank you, Rusty. Are we back up? Thank you, Erin. All right, we're at 9B Woodland Station filing number two preliminary plat sub 2023 through 05-05, a request by Tava House Properties LLC, the applicant and property owner, for a preliminary plat to subdivide 6.63 acres into one lot, two tracks, and right-of-way dedication. The subject property is located west of Woodland Hardware on Section 24, T12S, R69W of the Six Primoridian, 201 Saddle Cloaked Avenue in the Central Business District Zone. The presenter that tonight will be Planning Director Karen Schmick.
Well, actually, it's a group effort. We have a new face here this evening. We've been working with Baseline to help us with a variety of more complicated projects. So this evening, we have Andrew Baker here, and he will be doing the presentation. He's been doing a lot of the work behind the scenes on this project. Want to make sure that this this project gets the time and attention it needs since we recognize its importance to the community. And we've got a couple other complex projects he's been working on. But for tonight, here's his initial discussion with the city council.
Thank you, Karen. Welcome, Andrew.
So can everybody hear me? Is this on? All righty. Good evening, Council members. Madam Mayor Protem, thank you very much for having me. I'd also like to thank Karen, the rest of staff, and everybody in the audience for coming out tonight, participating and collaborating on the development of Woodland Park. My name is Andrew Baker. I'm a senior planner for Baseline. We've been working for the city for a couple of years now. And while I started on a couple of special projects, I am very much looking forward to being in front of you all more and more as the year progresses. Tonight, I will be presenting the preliminary plat application for Woodland Station filing number two. This application was proposed by the Tava House Properties LLC, who I believe we have some of those folks in the audience with us tonight. The review process for preliminary plat starts at a planning commission hearing. The planning commission provides recommendations on approval, denial, or an approval based on certain conditions. After that point, that recommendation is brought to this body, and tonight, a final decision will be made. The subject property is a little over six and a half acres located in downtown Woodland Park, south of US 24. We are is currently a vacant property located just to the east of two other vacant properties that you'll hear me talk about a lot tonight. The Beer Garden Development Lane, Beer Garden Lane Development Property, excuse me, is the one that you can see that has a little roundabout on the northeast corner.
Very sorry to interrupt. You're actually not sharing your screen. Little technical problem. Bear with us.
Okay. Act like you've been here before, right? All right, for the public record, I will go back one moment here. I do apologize. All right, Woodland Station filing number two preliminary plat. Planning Commission holds a hearing which took place last month. They have provided a recommendation, which I will just discuss here tonight. This body, the city council, will make the ultimate determination on this preliminary plat application. Property is a little over six and a half acres located directly to the east of two other vacant properties. I'll talk about these a little bit more tonight. The the one to the northeast, which you see that's accessed off of US 24, that has a paved roundabout, is owned by Beer Garden Lane Development LLC. I'll refer to this property as the Beer Garden property. And just to that, just to the south of that is another vacant lot that is owned by the city. I'll refer to that as the vacant city lot. Our sites that we're discussing tonight accessed from South Center Avenue as well as Midland Avenue. Though it is currently vacant, there is some existing drainage infrastructure on site as well as city as well as city water and wastewater services in the adjacent right of ways. The Downtown Development Authority adopted a foundation plan for this property in February of point two, two thousand and two. Five years later, the Woodland Station Overlay District was established. The intent of this overlay zoning district was to create compatibility with existing structures in the downtown as well as keeping the area's historic environment and nature and, and as well as just creating general harmony with the rest of the city. There is a resolution that was passed providing design guidelines within this boundary. However, in general, the intent of this boundary was to guide the character of the area with, while also providing some flexibility in those normal development regulations such as setbacks and architectural design. The comprehensive plan designates this property as downtown mixed use. To recap, the city's comprehensive plan sets out policies, objectives, and action items referring according to land use, housing, community character, as well as many other development aspects of the city. There is mixed use areas. The downtown mixed use area is obviously intended to be a bit more urban. The mix of uses that we're generally talking about is residential and commercial. In a downtown mixed use area, you could see things such as ground floor, retail, restaurants, entertainment, and residential above. Though that vertical mixed use isn't necessarily inherent. But with this designation is what you expect of a downtown. An activated pedestrian friendly environment, shops, entertainment, restaurants, and also just generally a place where folks want to be. The property is zoned central business district, which furthers some of these ideals. The purpose of the central business district zone is to create a downtown area with associated commercial activities that can be accessed by pedestrians as well as the motoring public. Density is considered high and design issues relate to the on-street US highway corridor improvements, including efficient off-street parking, landscaping, and pedestrian mobility. We have obviously a lot more to that, but that central business zone district being that this is one of the last undeveloped properties in downtown. We want to make sure that those ideals are held up in our review. The proposed preliminary plat is technically only plating one developable lot that is designated as lot one shown in the northwest corner. They are also showing a, two proposed tracks which are intended for future development as per their plan of development, which I believe was adopted last year. There is also right of way that is proposed both as an extension for Saddle Club Avenue moving to the west, which would eventually connect to the vacant city property. A, another future road that is running north and south, which would connect Saddle Club Avenue to the current Bergstrom Alley. And, and then connecting that back to Center Street and the main access from Highway twenty-four. Lot one is, as I mentioned, the only currently developable lot. This application was submitted in concurrence with a preliminary site plan that is also in review, though that is an administrative staff review and not included in this presentation tonight.
Excuse me, Andrew. Can you more clear here? Can you more clearly delineate where lot one is on this track A and track B?
I have some zoomed in pictures in my next slide, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Yep. One thing to note, which will probably be a little bit more clear with the zoomed in version, is the future road on the west side of the property. And then some of the utility easements that are shown there as well. I will get into those. Another zoomed out version showing a little bit more of the public improvements that are proposed and existing. You do see the Fountain Creek Drainage Channel that's running from the northwest to southeast through track B. There also is a small portion of FEMA designated flood plain at the end of that on the southeast corner of the property. As I mentioned, there are existing city water and sanitary lines that run under South Center Street and Saddle Club Road. So council member, let me know if, if this is a little bit clearer. I can certainly zoom in for you. But you can see lot one as located here in that northwest corner of the property. Track A is the, the L-shaped property that would be kind of left in, in that area that is bounded by on-street parking. The entire southern half of, or more than half, but the entire southern portion, everything south of Saddle Club Road would be track B and, and the, the phasing of the property works kind of in that direction as well, or the phasing of the project.
Yeah, just a point of correction. It's, the lot one is on the northeast. You keep saying northwest. Northeast.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, and just for clarification, that's where the, currently where the cog car is. That's correct.
That is currently where the cog car is. The, the cog car, it, between Bergstrom Alley and like where that property line is, the cog car might be kind of straddling both of those, but generally, yeah, that, that's, that's where the cog car is currently located. So to the north of this property, we do have Bergstrom Park. That is, there, the Bergstrom Alley is currently there, though not improved. That would be part of the proposal for this. The access to Bergstrom Park's parking lot is proposed to be moved from South Center Street on the, on the east side and relocated onto Bergstrom Alley on the south side of that park. That access change, the improvement of Bergstrom Park as well as improvements to Highway twenty-four on the north side do shrink the, the circumference of Bergstrom Park just a little bit, at least from a visual perception right now, and we can get into that a little bit later. The right of way, which I had mentioned before, on the west side of the property, you can see that a little bit better here where the dotted line, which my cursor is showing is current property line. In order for the forty-nine feet of required right of way to be plotted here, the applicant is showing an additional fifteen feet of right of way shown on the adjacent property to the west. In this case, the Beer Garden Property and then extending to the south and to the city-owned property as well. Because those, those property owners are not included on this application, that isn't necessarily how the final plat is going, is meant to be shown. And, and we can get into that when I get into the conditions later. This preliminary plat application was referred to all the normal internal reviewers, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, utilities, public works, and police departments, as well as of course, planning and building departments. Our dry utility companies like Black Hills Energy, Core Electric, C dot, or not, Century Link and TDS, as well as the Fire Protection District and C dot have all been included on this and reviewed this project. Review comments from the second submittal made on twelve eight twenty-three are forthcoming. Since the time of drafting this planning commission presentation and now, those comments, we, we have completed those. The city has initiated a review meeting with the applicant to discuss those next week. So, you know, we always want to make sure that we're presenting the same information during these public hearings, but just as information to you all. We, we, we have those now and are, and are essentially ready to kind of move on to next steps and discuss those with the applicant. Staff has found that the proposed preliminary plat conditionally complies with the applicable municipal code sections. I won't read all of those since clearly my mouth isn't working great tonight. But further review from city staff and C dot will be necessary to address the remaining comments. The, the remaining comments are not substantial or change the proposal from a, from this reviews standpoint. There are just some formatting issues as well as some of the kind of property ownership and conveyance items for right of way and utilities that will need to be worked out before the final plat is submitted. As I mentioned, we had a public, public hearing with planning commission on January eleventh. After consideration of this presentation, the application, the planning commission has recommended that the city council approve the Woodland Park, Woodland Station filing number two preliminary plat subject to the following conditions. Number one, prior to any construction on the subject property, the applicant must enter into a subdivision development agreement for the public improvements being installed as part of this subdivision. Number two, development of lot one of this subdivision is subject to approval of all applicable zoning development permits through the City of Woodland Park Planning Department and a building permit through Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. Number three, the applicant must resolve dedication of the right of way shown on the western edge of the property, either via separate instrument prior to final plat recordation or by including the subject properties and associated property owners in the forthcoming final plat application. Number four, the applicant must address the loss of public parkland in Bergstrom Park as well as future public and open space in the final plat submittal to the city. The potential relocation of the historical cog car currently located on lot one of the proposed plat must be addressed in the final plat submittal. Appropriate easements should be put in place if it is to remain anywhere on the subject property. I know that the applicant probably has a little bit more information on the, the, the potential relocation of that historical asset. Number six, the applicant must address all comments and red lines from city staff and external review agencies from the preliminary plat and site plan review before the submittal of the final plat and zoning development permits. Number seven, as part of the final plat application, all C dot comments, including an escrow account for the required public improvements must be, must be addressed. And finally, number eight, the preliminary plat as well as future final plats for this development must be revised to meet the standards found in municipal code section seventeen dash forty dash one seventy for location and the size of public easements. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions for staff?
Can you talk about the traffic that C dot asked to review again with the the traffic impact study?
Sure, absolutely. The, the findings of, I, I believe that it was actually the traffic impact study that was submitted suggested that a, a right-hand turn lane on eastbound US twenty-four be added. The applicant has stated that the existing right of way for US twenty-four is wide enough to accommodate this extra turn lane just by a restriping. And, and I believe that the, not the sidewalk, but the, the landscaping strip between the sidewalk and the highway would have to be removed in order for that to happen. The, the latest submittal that I got, that, that we have, the applicant stated that, you know, the forthcoming civil drawings kind of showing that would, would be produced. But at least on this preliminary plat, they, they have shown with dotted lines where that, that future curve would be moved to.
Is there anything, anybody talking about the possibility of slow traffic in the left turn lanes? We're always challenged here going westbound for left turn, so.
Sure, you know, I, I think with, with this or any downtown development, there is going to be a level of service that's decreased or there will certainly be more traffic. Because it is US twenty-four, the review of that traffic study and all of the recommendations put forth, we take those from C dot. And so the, you know, I, I have to rely on those folks to be making sure that all of those levels of service and everything meets what their standards are.
I think, I think Ben would like to weigh in just a little. Yeah, so I can discuss a little bit about C dot's process for the different phases throughout this development. So when they're reviewing the traffic impact analysis and the traffic impact study, they're going to look at all those potential trip impacts for each one of the phases. And then as part of that item, talking about the escrow account, C dot would manage the escrow account to make sure that each phase is contributing into its respective contribution towards improvements there. And so those improvements might look more than, look like more than just that deceleration lane by Bergstrom Park. They might do additional extensions on those, those left turn lanes that you were asking about there. But it's all triggered on each phase of the particular project and that's why that escrow portion is important for the approval so that each phase contributes. So it's not the last person in that gets stuck doing all those improvements or the first.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Yeah. Can you talk about, from what I see, well, there's two things on here. One is resolving the, not the, I'm sorry, the loss of the public parkland in Bergstrom Park. Can you talk about that and also include conversation about the amphitheater?
Sure. I, I can't say that I know much about an amphitheater. I, I know that as part of the planned development in phase three, there is a public plaza or at least public open space that is planned and proposed. That is part of their approved.
It's existing. It's, it's not called the amphitheater. It's called the, there's a colloquial names for it. I won't go into what they are, but.
If you pull up your, pull up your
Love your picture.
Picture again, the zoomed out one. It's that, it's that dotted circular line.
Circular structure.
On the north side.
Bergstrom Park Amphitheater. Now I'm with you. Sorry, I, I'm still, still getting the local terms down.
That's what we
Well, actually Suzanne will tell you what it's really called.
That's what we I will not. I'll tell you, I'll tell you. It is the stupid round thing.
Where everybody takes pictures.
That, yeah. Okay, so please, go ahead.
As far as I know, I, I don't believe that the amphitheater would be affected by that. And, and again, technically, the, the actual property, the, 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 the physical parcel of the park isn't necessarily being affected. Right now, where the sidewalk sits and just visually, you know, on the south and east sides, you can't really tell where that property line is. And, and you know, certainly that's not put on the applicant, right? And, and I think that they have addressed this and in, in their plan of development by adding more public space into a public plaza in phase three. So I, I don't believe that staff is necessarily concerned about this, but it's a condition that we wanted to place in there just to keep the record going, you know, and, and just to like keep it sure that we're acknowledging that there is a loss, maybe the perceived loss is, is more than the actual loss. But just to ensure that, you know, for a downtown mixed use and, and one of the last greenfields in the city, that that is replaced or replaced intentionally.
Well, what I, what I read was, we're likely to use two parking spaces in Bergstrom Park and right of way on our vacant piece of land, which is earmarked, as far as I know from Erin, is for parking. For the, is, that's what I had, was led to understand that we own that piece of property and it's intended, stated intention for. So you're talking of carving out two areas of, in your preliminary plan of city-owned property without any agreement with that as yet. So I just want you to talk about that.
Sure. I'll, I'll address the vacant city property first. My understanding of that was that the purchase was for future right of way and, and, and for right of way connection of Saddle Club Avenue going to the west. So my understanding is that the, the, the purchase of that city-owned property was always for future right of way. A lot of the right of way down here does have on-street parking, and so it, it could absolutely be both. As far as the loss of the parking spaces in the Bergstrom Park parking lot, yes, two of those will be lost. But through the analysis that the applicant has done, based on the existing on-street parking, the new proposed on-street parking and then with that park, they're, they're essentially making up for it. So you know, the, the, in a sense of walkability and in the area, there, 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 you know, won't necessarily be a loss of parking.
Okay, because when I was looking through it, I saw that it said that the parking for Tava House is going to be private parking. So thanks for clarifying that.
Right, and that kind of speaks to some of the property ownership and conveyance items which I have discussed. So we can get into that a little bit. On-street parking that is located within public right of way is going to be public parking. The applicant did state, I think at least maybe once or twice in the application, that the alley The applicant did state, I think at least maybe in once or twice in the application, that the alley parking would be private. Though that kind of conflicts with that being public right of way, so we need to figure that out. For the future road on the west side. As I had stated, in order for that to be considered public right of way, that must be platted either with this. Final plat or or another one. If it's intended to be a road, but stay private, then the city does not own, maintain or or, you know, operate that road at all. So. You know, theoretically, there could be on street private parking. I'm not sure if that's really the applicant's intent and or 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 the city's, right? Uh, so that's kind of some of those irons details that need to be ironed out.
Okay. And. So you're wanting us to move ahead with this, so it doesn't hinder your forward progress. But at some point, we're going to get a subdivision development agreement here.
Yeah.
With more detail and substance to it.
Absolutely. The final plat, well, all of these things would be, you know, fixed by that time, and there would be a development agreement that went along with that. As well as future site plan reviews too. So yes, the this is that first step in the public hearing process. And part of the reason for having the hearings right now tonight is is so the applicant can continue to move forward with. Their phasing plan per the approved plan of development.
Very good. And I just want to state for the record that the aesthetics of the style of the building. Is in keeping. It it doesn't look like it's in keeping with mountain designs in its preliminary look here, but I'm guessing before this goes. To a to a full approval from the city that is going to be addressed.
Uh, yes, the the site plan review will like is a staff administrative review, though that will be approved per all municipal code standards.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, anything else for the applicant or for the staff? Before we hear from the applicant, anything staff?
I was just gonna add that because this falls within that Woodland Station overlay district. The architecturals actually do go back to the DDA's design committee for review as well. So that gets the aesthetics of the building get reviewed there as well.
Good.
All right. Would the applicant like to address the counsel? Please.
Yep.
Hey, everyone.
Good evening.
How is everybody?
Great, thank you for asking.
So I'm just gonna give a brief brief touch. Uh, I want you to know a little bit of the history. Of how we got to this point. I want to introduce our team. And see if you have any questions for for us. I'll handle some of these items that are on the PowerPoint. If there's anything technical. I will lob that over to our architect or civil engineer. So.
Mark, would you identify yourself for the.
Oh, yeah, sure. Mark Weaver, three one two April Sun Court. Woodland Park eight oh eight six three.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me introduce. The team here. Ryan Lloyd is our architect with Echo Architecture. He's online, I think Suzanne. Uh, he's online. Our civil engineer, I think everybody knows David Maharris. Our owner's rep is Chris Hanson. Our traffic engineer is not here tonight. That's LSC is our traffic engineer. Surveyor, you know, everybody knows Eric Simonson. He's he's our surveyor. Uh, and then Derek and I, Derek Wagner and I. And Mary are part of the ownership team for Taba House Properties LLC. So you've got owners, consultants, the whole gang's here. Uh, so what I wanted you to see, a little bit of history. If you can think back to pre pandemic August. Derek and I were trying to acquire what was lot two, future lot two. Of this six point six three acres, just that lot. So we decided to pass on it for various reasons. But we came back to it in twenty twenty two. And then we purchased the entire six point six three acres. In April of last year. Okay, so we've been at this for four and a half years, so you can tell that we're in it for the long haul. Just so you know. We've got all our development team is formed. We've been, we've got attorneys and CPAs and we've got. Chef Matthews, the triple master chef is going to be our chef for the whole restaurant concept. Uh, we've been setting that up all this time. We've spent about one point one million. In hard dollars to this point, and it's going up every single week. Uh, the project probably overall, it'll be about six million dollars. It'll take about twelve months to construct. We should open May, June, twenty twenty five. That is the hope. So it'll have a casual dining component. A fine dining component. The culinary school, the Paragon Culinary School. And then a party room. So here's some renderings. So you can see, this is looking from Center Street to the northwest. That's looking from the plaza area, which is directly south. Of the building. Pike's Peak is behind you in this photograph. And then this is from over on the west side of the plaza, looking to the northeast and that. That portion there on the end, that is the party room. That's what we have planned there. And then here, this is looking from Highway twenty four. Uh, southwest at the building. So the entrance is down there to the, you see the little fire pit over there on the left. That's the entrance in the upstairs area you see up there. That's the fine dining component. And then you can see the party room on the far right from the building. Okay, some other things to think about. Recall that we have executed the development agreement and the plan of development. It's recorded, executed, recorded. Everybody can see it. Uh, we did it on May twenty first of last year. The phasing that we reference from time to time for track A and track B. That phasing plan is in that plan of development. And we'll use those same uses and timelines that are dictated in that document. And the six point six three acres, we all know it's got a lot to overcome. However. We are not shrinking back for that from that. We will make it be something that we're all going to be proud of in this. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for the applicants? Carol?
Uh, Mark, because it was mentioned already, are you going to talk about the future of the cog car in this process? Or can you?
Sure, um, so we don't own, yes. We don't own the cog car. We have offered to move it wherever it wants to go. We will pay for that. It will not be on the six point six three acres. So. Uh, I'm I'm not sure if all the clarification has come about who owns it. We're we're kind of out of the loop on that. But that's the the intention is we're happy to move it wherever the owner wants it to go.
Thanks, it's.
And Carol, I can clarify, as the DDA liaison, we did find the document. That shows the ownership of the cog cars with the U Pass Historical Society. It is a fully ratified. Ratified. It's got all three signatures on the document and it has been located.
So the Historical Society then make the final determination on where it will be placed or will the city?
Uh, the city, since the city would be offering up the location or the property, the U Pass. Owns it. If they choose to put it on the city's property, that would be. Acceptable. I know by the top group, they'll pick it up and move it. If the U Pass wants to put it someplace else, then it.
And that's where I was going with the question, that they could make that decision to put it somewhere else as well.
It's they own it. Yes, they sure could.
That's 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 an important point for the the community to know. It doesn't belong to the city.
That is correct.
So then just, and I know this is kind of tangential to what you're presenting, but. It was at one point we were having the city do a. A outreach to find out where people would like it. That's off the table now.
We put that on hold for the time being. Yes.
Good, thank you.
It it may come up when it. We address the final resting location, we need a temporary place that the city is going to offer. And which could become the permanent if they do the survey. That's up to the city manager. But there is a temporary place.
Very close to being off topic. We could get back to the application, please. Her city attorney. Thank you. Glad to hear that. Any further comment on the application, counsel? All right, then I will open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Suzanne, if do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not. And there's nobody online. That would like to speak either.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the counsel on this topic? It's public hearing. Seeing no one. I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And I will look to the council for further deliberation, questions. And eventually a motion.
I can make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve Woodland Station filing number two preliminary plat. A request by the Tava House Properties LLC. For a preliminary plat to subdivide the six point six three acres into one lot. Two tracks and the right of way dedication. The subject property is located west of Woodland Hardware in section twenty four. T one two S. R six nine W and sixth P M. Two oh one Saddle Club Avenue in the central business district zone.
I'll second it.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Yes, Karen.
Not to manage, but would you like to include the conditions?
Please, I was going to suggest the same thing.
Okay, I'll include the conditions.
You're gonna second the conditions too?
I will second it with the conditions as presented.
Karen. Any other further deliberation, counsel? Suzanne.
Thank you. Zulawaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen, lady.
Good fortune. Keep going.
All right, that's. That takes us to new business and we have none. And then to the eleven A reports, the mayor's report, I do have. On behalf of the mayor. Community events, February first through February fourteenth of twenty twenty four. Fifth and eighth grade boys' basketball are playing their games every Saturday from nine AM to one PM at the Woodland Park Middle School. Secondly, registration for coed volleyball is currently open with games starting February twenty sixth. Registration for coed baseball and girls softball is currently open with games beginning May fourth. Wednesday, February seventh, Lifeline Screening will be at the U Pass Cultural Center from eight AM to five PM. To learn more or schedule an appointment, check out Lifeline Screenings website. And finally, Wednesday, February fourteenth. The U Pass Cultural Center will be hosting a Valentine's Day dance with Swing Factory performing. This event is part of the Free Community Concert Series happening every second Wednesday. Of the month at the Cultural Center. Doors open at six thirty PM. The U Pass Cultural Center bar will be open and outside food is welcome to be brought in. Show starts at seven PM and wraps up around nine to nine thirty PM. All ages are welcome, but children must stay with an adult at all times. Check out the U Pass Cultural Center's website for more information. And that's what I have tonight, counsel. Rusty?
I have one announcement as the liaison for the DDA. Our next scheduled meeting is at seven thirty AM, right here in council chamber on February sixth of this year.
Thank you.
That's it.
Robert?
Thank you. Yes, keep Woodland Park beautiful. We have a shed that needs cleanup, so anyone who wants to help for an hour. Uh, to clean up. The shed. It's actually a combined shed between Keepwood and Park Beautiful and what was Main Street. So we are meeting as a board. Next Thursday, five o'clock. Uh, we need more board members. This our next council meeting, the bylaws for Keepwood and Park Beautiful will come up to be reviewed and approved. So. If you want to help keep the city clean, come and join the board. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Catherine?
Um, I don't have any reports, but I do have a question for Jeff. Where are we on the school board I G A? Topic?
The latest overture to the school board was on by Mayor Labar. And if you could help me, Kelly, I believe there has been. Have we had any response at all yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, so where we are is waiting for a response.
Anything else, Catherine? Thank you. Frank?
Thank you. Uh, yes, do you all still have my? Veterans breakfast flyer? It's going to be the same day we're having two feet of snow.
Awesome.
Oh.
But I've been assured by Matt Meister, the guy on twenty one, tells me that the roads will be clear enough Saturday morning. So we're still having veterans breakfast. At Soy twenty four at Rick's Pool Hall at eight o'clock. On Saturday morning, so I hope to see you all there. And on February sixth at three thirty, we have the Historical Preservation Committee meeting.
Frank, are you recommending that guys don't come on their motorcycles?
No, you can come anywhere you want to come. Just show us. Motorcycles are pretty cool. Especially in the snow.
Quite a challenge.
Ah, there we go. There's that fancy. It's open to all veterans starting at eight o'clock Saturday. Thank you.
Carol, and I thank Councilman Nakai for mentioning the intergovernmental agreement with the school district regarding the sales tax selected by the city for the school district. And would remind the council that in July of last year, we began the reach outreach to the school district to. Uh, update that intergovernmental agreement. And have basically been stonewalled. There's no other way to put it. So as a suggestion to the council, I would like to ask. Uh, the city attorney, and of course I'll need the consensus, I think at least from one other council member on this. Uh, that we go ahead and. Uh, capture the essence of that I G A in a resolution, a resolution that would lay out the the same. Uh, elements that we had included in the the new draft of the I G A. But include in that, um, I I don't want to call it punitive. Uh, action, but basically a means to. Invite the school district to acknowledge the I G A. Um, and if they are still unable to come to a public hearing to discuss it, that we include as sunset date. With a tax. Do I have that consensus from the council? To simply draft the resolution and then allow us to discuss it as an agenda item?
Uh, I I don't know why we would enter, why would we would insert ourselves as a council between something the citizens voted for? We're a pass through agency for this, these funds. And it seems to me that we're, um, we're taking two parallel tracks here and trying to insert ourselves into. The school district's business. And really, I guess that you can have to ask yourselves, how popular would it be to the citizens? For council to come in and say, we're going to cancel a sales tax revenue to the school. It's. That's about the only thing we can actually.
I don't disagree with you. You you are correct in that respect. But much in the same way as the council, we were able to consider a reduction in the mill levy of property tax. We also have that obligation and responsibility to the community for sales tax that was voted on. This is not, as I, as I just mentioned, it's not intended to be punitive. It's. Simply, we have been ignored now for over six months to. Um, update the I G and it's I G A and it's all we ever asked to do is to update the I G A, which was agreed to in two thousand and sixteen. The resolution or ordinance, whatever our city attorney advises us to use. Is simply a means to bring the school district to the public and let the public know how they're spending our sales tax. If they can't do that, then I would ask that there would be a mechanism in that ordinance resolution. To hold their feet to the fire. We owe that to the citizens.
Would it be, it seems to be. Uh, um, that the area that we have a legitimate. uh, a legitimate claim, if you like, is the fact that we're the pass-through organization and it costs the city a certain amount of dollars to process uh, the collection of those taxes and then to send them over to the.
That, that certainly is one of our primary responsibilities, but
What, what, just.
Even more important responsibility is that we owe it to the taxpayers to account with the expenditures of that sales tax. And right now, we don't know how it's being spent.
Oh, it's not actually our purview.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It is in the ordinance, in the original ordinance, we put in how that money was to be spent. We are not getting any information from the school board on how that money is being spent.
Well, it'd be great if the school board and the city council had quarterly meetings again where we actually said hi to each other.
We would love to. Great. Love to do that, Robert. I would just like to to state not a fact, actually, is that it, it was, uh, it is a pass-through, but it is our tax. And we are passing that on, we are imposing that tax on the people because it is the city's tax and our, our authority to impose a sales tax. And we have agreed, as the people asked us, to pass that on to the school district for use. So ultimately, the council is accountable to the public for the use of those public funds that are, are ours. And that's the basis from my perspective, just factual information. And that's where it comes from, in my mind. Not to say whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. That just is what it is.
And if I may add, it, it's not that we're um, using this as a uh, a threat to the, the school board. We're simply saying at the five-year mark, beginning it from two thousand and sixteen, we were to come together as two entities to review the IGA and either renew it, uh, revise it, whatever needed to be done. That did not occur. I got a public school education, and I know the five-year mark was in twenty twenty-one, and it's now twenty twenty-four. In July, we asked the school district to look at a draft IGA that they could modify. We could discuss publicly. And at every turn, they have refused that invitation. Uh, it, it's time for the community to know how the money is being spent. It may be something as benign as some have suggested is all being used for salaries. Well, whose salaries? The school teachers, faculty, administration, or the superintendent? Or the attorney? How is it being used if it in fact is being used simply for salaries? Which is an area that it could have been used on. We owe it to our constituents to have accountability and transparency on how that tax money is used. Yes, we do also have the responsibility for the pass-through uh, of that, that money. But that's, actually, I'll correct myself. That is secondary to our primary responsibility. Our primary responsibility is accounting for the use of tax dollars. And if the only way we can bring the school district to the table is via a resolution or an ordinance, because they don't want to discuss just the revision of the IGA, then that's my recommendation.
Well, Carol, I'll, I'll weigh in.
Go ahead.
I will support you in asking the city attorney. So you have my consensus, uh, it's not a vote, but uh,
Sure.
I, I do think we should see the language in what the attorney would draft up. Um, so we can discuss it. I, I'm curious. Um, we have a responsibility uh, to the citizens. They come to us, they've come to that podium and said some things. So we have a, a responsibility to respond to comments from our constituents. And tax oversight is one of those things that we have responsibility for. So I would like to support the the document creation so we can discuss it properly. But I would like to see the language in front of me so I can intelligently discuss.
Sure, uh, but the last, I just wanna ask you, Jeff. The last that I heard, you were speaking with their attorneys and you guys were figuring, it was like in your hands to figure out when the meeting would happen between us. And so in, in those, is there any sort of official written correspondence you've got with their attorney? And is there any timeline that was requested or set? So that we have something like, I mean, to go into doing a resolution or doing a, an ordinance, to me is premature to having the, the requests that we had between you and the other attorney uh, coming to the table and getting us to just meet together and talk. So where is that? And were there anything written, recorded, and other timeline set?
There was. And there were a number, there was quite a bit of back and forth between me and the attorney. Uh, not so long ago, and I'd be happy to resend this. I sent a summary of all of that communication and attached that email traffic to the summary. Uh, the uh, at the conclusion of that back and forth, um, we were gonna wait until uh, December last year to uh, to set up a meeting. Uh, but as, as that time came to pass, um, I was, the direction was that the elected officials, it was gonna become more of an elected official to elected official overture. That's what led to the mayor reaching out recently uh, to the council suggesting a work session between this council and the school board. And that's the overture that we haven't heard back from. Yeah.
And, and we, we did receive that, that email chain. So I, I'm familiar with the fact that um, it, it, the can just kept getting kicked down the road. But Mayor LeBar contacted um, President Rester Holtz of the board, and uh, there was no response. And then she contacted the new board president, um, Mick Bates, and has received no response. And so that's why I have suggested or recommended that um, let, let's bring them to the table in some other way and, and allow them to have that discussion with us. This should not be, you know, a, a, a dictate to the school board. It's simply for them to acknowledge that that IGA is outdated, needs to be up, updated, and with, and we offered uh, the form of a work session, and we got absolutely no response. So my recommendation is either go via ordinance or resolution, but include in there, and whether we vote on it as a council or not, I want the discussion point to be introduced that if, if we can't come to an agreement of at least an annual review of how our tax dollars are being spent. And by the way, I shop in Woodland Park. I don't go down the hill for my groceries. I go to Walmart. I should have a reserved parking place at Walmart at this point in time. We need to know how those dollars are being spent. And yes, we do have the authority to end that tax, but that is not my recommendation. But if we can't come to an agreement within another, uh, another elected uh, body, then we need to uh, actually uh, explore whether we wanna have that tax in place again or, again or not. We have one of the highest sales tax levels in the state. And if we can't prove where that money's being spent, we owe it to our taxpayers to get rid of it.
Well, you've got my consensus.
Let the discussion begin.
I would be very concerned that that tax doesn't end up if we stop it, if that tax doesn't end up on our property.
Why?
And then, and.
Why? Why?
I believe it can by state law.
No, it cannot.
It is not part of the mill levy override.
No, it's not.
It's not. It's a sales tax voted on by the citizens of Woodland Park.
Do you have your directions?
Isn't there?
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, uh, City Attorney's Report.
There's some other complicated pieces.
We did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tam. Not much for a report. I've introduced her to most of you, but with me this evening is Betsy Stewart, a associate in our office who you will be seeing more of here in Woodland Park. She has extensive municipal law experience here in Colorado, including acting as defense counsel for Searsa. I believe actually representing Woodland Park in a case, so.
She said it at one point.
Plenty to have you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to work with all of you, and I look forward to seeing you all more.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, City Managers Report, Erin?
Uh, counsel, you will see that uh, the final budget books have been delivered to each of you, and they are also uploaded to the website, so that is done. And then I believe Suzanne would like to give you an election update.
Thank you. As counsel knows by now, from a few hours ago, we had the lot drawing this evening to pick the order. The names would appear on the city ballot. We currently have eight candidates for city council. We had one candidate withdraw her application today, and that was Karen Sherrell. She is no longer running for council. So we have eight candidates for council, two for mayor. The ballot set will be uh, sent up to the company tomorrow, and we'll start proofing the ballot, getting it ready for print. We will be mailing the military and oversee ballots. Will be mailed out the week of February twelfth. As council recalls, they get their ballots before everybody else does. And then the city resident ballots will be, begin being mailed out on March eleventh. So we are hot and heavy in the middle of election season.
As Cindy used to refer to, it's silly season.
That's what we've talked about today. Thank you. Erin, anything else?
Erin?
No, thank you.
Erin, can you have the uh, Chamber Commerce tell us when their, their forum's gonna be?
Debbie, would you like to come on?
Thank you, Robert. The uh, City Council Mayor Forum is scheduled for Tuesday, March fifth. It's scheduled to be here at City Council Chambers. We expect to begin at five PM, a two-hour timeframe. Um, I have not had in-depth conversations yet about live streaming, but we will discuss that as well. Our moderator for the evening will be Steve Wolf, uh, our past chair of the chamber, and the timekeeper uh, of the evening will be myself. We will have prepared questions. Uh, the candidates will have the opportunity for open, opening and closing statements. Their questions will be asked on a rotating basis. We will be collecting questions that evening from the audience, but there will be a group that will be vetting the questions. We're here to hear the candidates' answers on issues. We're, and we're not here for anything other than that, to do that. So we scheduled that in conjunction with talking with Suzanne so that we would have the forum prior to the ballots dropping locally.
And, and you said mayoral uh, debate, so it's for mayor and for council?
Mayor and council, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. All right, without further ado, uh, thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. This meeting is adjourned.
And there's a reason why.